Good afternoon. Welcome to the June 13 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. First order of business, if you have a device like this, or a pager, or anything similar, if you would silence those, or turn them off now, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant, and you have come to talk to us today about a case, and you haven't completed one of these forms, they're available on a table outside the chambers, and we would ask you to complete one and reference the case, and we would be happy to hear you when we hear the item. First order of business, commissioners, is approval of the minutes. Move. Gave a motion, second, to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. You weren't here, okay. Minutes are approved? Okay. We still have the quorum to approve them. Just.
Consent items?
Continuance requests.
I'm sorry.
We have six uncontested requests for continuance. Item 41 is PUD 1498, request to continue until July the 18th. Item 42, C 6466, until July the 18th. Item 43, PUD 1483, continue until July the 18th. Item 44, CE 855, continue until August the 8th. Item 45, S PUD 683, and item 46, CE 831, have both been withdrawn.
Is there anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of the cases that were just read?
The uncontested continuance.
We have a motion to approve the uncontested continuance. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
New request for continuance, item 19, PUD 1492. Item 20, C 6454. Item 23, S PUD 710. Item 26, C 6462, are all continued until July the 18th. Item 28, C 6426, has been withdrawn. Item 30, S PUD 719, and item 35, C 6472, are both continued until July 18th.
And is there anyone here today who came to talk to us about those items just read? An approval of new requests. We have a motion, a second, to approve the additional continuance. Cast your votes. That's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Okay. Now the consent docket.
We have nine items on the consent docket today. Item 1, PC 10345. Item 2, PC 10348. Item 3, C 6468. Item 4, C 6474. Item 5, C 6476. Item 6, PUD, S P 1474. Item 7, C 6480. Item 8, S PUD, S P 675. And item 9, C 5954.
Anyone come today to talk to any of, to us about any of the items 1 through 9 on the agenda? Move the consent docket. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
An item requiring separate vote, first item is item 10, which is Lone Oak East. We have two items here, A and B. C 6333 is the preliminary plat. Item B is to enter into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, the applicant's attorney appeared that he did not have authority to deal with the case. Now I notice the applicant not here, attorney's not here. It's kind of old hat, that it's been before us, decided once, and been to the courthouse. At this point, I would move to deny this plat, for the reason that neither the applicant nor his representative are here. They have not agreed to the TEs. In particular, they have not agreed to TE 7, which was the point of our contention the last time. That would be my motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion? We have a motion, and a second, to deny the preliminary plat, item 10A. Cast your votes. It is denied. We have no need to go into executive session on item B, so we'll move to item 11.
Item 11 is C 6471. This is a final plat of Western Health Plex in Ward 8.
My name is Jack Sargeant. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant in number 11 and number 12, which are kind of companion cases. One is a plat request, and the other is a request to vacate some easements, which will be replaced by a plat. But the property's owned by Houghton Heights Limited Partnership. Houghton Heights has entered into a real estate purchase and sale contract with Western Healthcare Partners, and for them to purchase the property. David Neft and Darren Miller are here with Western Healthcare Partners. In turn, Western Healthcare Partners have entered into a lease agreement with St. Anthony's Hospital to construct a building on the premises, which, this is a rendering of the building that will be leased to St. Anthony's. The proposed vacations, easements, first is a city water line, which runs right through the middle of the property that is to be the preliminary plat. The other easement is a city water drainage feature, which runs from the south of the property up back to the center, and then over east to the east property line. And we ask that both of those be vacated. Now, the plat replaces both of these easements. The water line easement will go from the east side of the property down to the south boundary, across the south boundary to the west boundary, north again, up to connect with the existing water line. And that's shown on the preliminary plat. On the water drainage will be moved, rather than a 90-degree angle, it will angle from the south side of the property to the east side within the preliminary plat. We did not have any problem with the technical evaluations on the application for the, in C 6471. We had asked that in item number 3, there is a requirement for the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority approval for any access off of the Memorial frontage, and it included Western. And we asked that Western be removed, because we don't think the Turnpike Authority has authority over Western. But with respect to all the other technical evaluations, we were okay.
I'd like to either amend TE 3, or add a TE, to the effect that there would be no curb cuts on Memorial until the Turnpike Authority does whatever they're going to do, and then we revisit it. That's a very unsafe condition, and for traffic coming off of the turnpike and trying to get into that corner, crossing three lanes of traffic, is a real serious issue. We had a traffic study for that area that we saw three or four years ago, and the solutions were, well frankly, laughable. But I'm not willing to vote for this, or support it, with curb cuts on Memorial at this time. It's too dangerous.
Well, of course, we had intended, as the current TEs say, to go to the Turnpike Authority and get their written approval on wherever the, the access would be. As, as a part of just planning, we intended to make the access on the far western boundary of the, where the preliminary plat is.
We also think that there should probably be a connection to the rest of the PUD. You're isolating this corner, as I understand what you're proposing. Nick?
I'm a little, little confused on the Memorial Road issue. I had a preliminary meeting, and obviously this was preliminary, but it was my understanding that your curb cut on Memorial was going to be well west of where the off-ramp comes in, so people would not be able to come across the off-ramp and immediately cut across two or three lanes of traffic and turn into this facility.
That's correct. If you look at the, what's on.
Regrettably, on our staff report, that looks awfully tight. On the large one that I, that I saw in our preliminary meeting, it looked like that driveway was a couple hundred feet behind the, the off-ramp. And so that, that's what I'm asking for clarification on.
This is Darren Miller.
Darren Miller, the.
Before you start.
Sorry.
My concern stands, though, because the Turnpike Commission is going to presumably take that ramp and move it west. How far west, we don't know, and whether they simply recreate the situation that I'm describing now, we don't know until they do it. And by the time they do it, we're stuck. And that's my concern.
Darren Miller, I'm the co-developer and architect on the project. Our intention was to provide the curb cut at the further and most western boundary of the property, as, as we just discussed. And as, as you said, it's, it's about 150 feet west of the current, current off-ramp to, to the turnpike. So we, we've, that's been our intention all along, is not to get into a traffic issue at that.
I don't think that solves it, is my problem. I, I think that it winds up potentially being recreated when the Turnpike Authority steps up. And I'm just not willing, at least for me, to vote to approve that now.
What you're saying is, if, assume that 150 feet is correct, you're, you're saying Turnpike backs it up 300 feet, then we have the same problem.
No, we've recreated the problem. And I don't think that's prudent at that, at that corner.
Let me step in to confirm what the chairman's saying. I have friends who live just north of that, where you live, and I go and take that exit quite frequently to go visit, and it is horrendous. And so, I back up totally what the chairman's saying. I really can't support a curb cut on Memorial until the Turnpike Authority says yea, nay, or whatever, because you're going to have to come in on Western. I just, that's, that's an impossible, short, you know, step off of the turnpike, and to get on Western, it's really difficult, just if you're just there without any other traffic coming in.
The appropriate long-term solution may well be that that curb cut ought to be closer to the eastern boundary of your site than the west, but then we're locked into.
I, I don't think the intention of that curb cut is, is for traffic coming off the turnpike and/or public traffic. It's, it's our ambulance entrance to the back, and we foresee that all the traffic would have to come around and enter off the western corridor.
How do you control that?
Well, that, that's why we pushed it to the far eastern edge of the property, so that.
Well, but when the turnpike ramp is moved to the west, there's going to be nothing to prevent vehicular traffic coming off the turnpike and going into that curb cut. And it's, we're just back to the same place where we are right now. And that's not good planning, that's not appropriate, it's not safe.
Is there a way to, for you guys to read and modify this technical evaluation, and that would either be closed if the turnpike moves back, or you'll make alternative arrangements with easement or whatever to, to regain that access?
I think there's, that's correct. But what I also believe is, if the, if the entrance were to be where we are asking for it to be, on the far west end, and that interfered with the Turnpike Authority's plans for construction, they could come and take that away from us. I mean, they have that, the power to condemn and, and close it. So, you know, they can, when they get ready to do what they want to do, they can, they can do it.
Sure, but that doesn't allay the, the concerns at this level. And I'm, I'm trying to basically get, get you guys what you need, and, and give us what we need.
You need two approvals. You need ours and the Turnpike Authority, is what it comes down to. And we'd like to know what they're doing, and how, what your response is, rather than wind up with a situation that we consider unsafe.
Right.
And if there's a way to allow a curb cut to the western end of this, because it could take the Turnpike Authority a fair amount of time to come around and do what they're talking about doing, but then it comes back to us as well at that point in time. I mean, can we have a, can we, Dan, can we do a TE that allows us to revisit the curb cut issue in the future?
This is the final plat, I'm not sure how you do that.
Okay.
I mean, we were looking at this as, as if the commission approved this, we would still have to go before we start construction and get approval from the Turnpike Authority. If they did not give us approval, we can't do anything. So, it, it's.
Yeah. Microphone, Janice.
Yeah, we're not concerned about what happens if they don't give you approval. We're concerned about what happens if they do give you approval. So, that, that doesn't solve our problem.
They've designed some good interchanges and some poor interchanges, and we're concerned
Mr. Yocel?
Yeah.
We've, we've talked together, and I don't know if this would satisfy you or not, but with respect to this access off of Memorial, we could make that limited access for the, which, the purposes for ambulances. And so we could make it controlled, where you would need an electronic device to open a gate to get in there.
That works. Limits to emergency access with a physical control, that works, because that solves the thing, the concern I have, which is conflict, traffic conflicts there, which occur all the time now.
Right.
I'm not trying to keep you from being able to do your project, but I don't want, I don't want to create clients for you right at that intersection.
Do we need to, how do we accomplish that?
Do that with a TE.
amend TE number 3, that access off of Memorial will be only, will be.
Controlled.
Controlled, wherever, where you're locating it. It'll be controlled, it'll be emergency access only.
Okay, that's fine.
That satisfies my concern. Any other, Nick?
Well, I just have one question to get on record. This facility is similar to the other two you've just built here in the city, and in that it is not a hospital, and it not going to need a, a special permit for it to be a hospital.
That's correct. There are two existing facilities which will be similar to this. One is at southwest 134th and I-44, and the other one is I-40 and Douglas. None of, not this facility, and the other two do not have overnight beds. And so if somebody needs to be admitted to the hospital, they go from here down to St. Anthony's main campus.
Commissioners, any discussion or comments of approval? With the, there's no protest that I know of. With the modified TE number 3. Okay, we have a motion, and a second, to approve item 11 as conditioned. Cast your votes. And item 12 is the related easement. I don't see a problem with this. An approval of item 12? Okay, we have a motion, a sec, do we have a second? Okay, thank you. Motion, a second, to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for working with us on it.
Item 13 is PC 10340, an application by the Deleese Company to rezone 10546 Northwest 10th Street from AA Agricultural to I-2 Modern Industrial, Ward 1.
Afternoon, Warren Peacock, WPM Design Group, representing the applicant. We're basically asking for straight zoning on this property. It conforms with zoning in the general area, and we've met all the staff requirements as far as traffic studies and their comments, which they had very few. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No one signed up, commissioners? I'm with approval. We have a motion, and a second, to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is S PUD 717, application by John Penion to rezone 10545 Northwest 10th Street from S PUD 203, 203 to S PUD 717, Ward 1.
Is the applicant here? Move it to the heel. Move it, move item 14 to the heel of the docket, then.
Item 15, PUD 1496, application by 122nd and Western Development to rezone 12301 Northwestern from C 3 to PUD 1496 in Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor's Commissioner Brian Kuhn, with you as always, representing the applicant. First of all, the three TEs, we agree with the three TEs. Couple things we've also worked out with the neighbors, they want our parking lots to have sight-proof fences along the edges of them with trees, and we've agreed to do that. You may have one letter that came, I'm sorry, I'm on a long project, sorry. I'm sorry. It's still okay with the three TEs.
I thought I was the only one who did that.
It's been a kind of a weird day today here, so, even though I wasn't in this room, we're there. But anyway, three TEs, and I'm okay with the three TEs. I'd be glad to answer questions you have. I met with James early on this, so.
Brian, I'm, I'm looking at your site plan. Is there any way to pull some of that parking away from the hard corner?
We tried to do that, and we met with James, and we pulled quite a bit of it, a little bit further west, but the hard corner with who they have as a possible tenant, they want the parking to be in front. So, if that tenant goes away, we'll still work on that. You know, we get a benefit when we do that. So, if a different tenant shows up, then we could possibly do that. But with that type of tenant, there's really not much we could do.
I could tell them what it was. It's classic.
Brian, couple of things. In your facade regulations, wording's been changed just a little bit to say 70% brick, veneer, macery rock, stucco, cement board siding, or other similar finish. What are we talking about there?
Well, I think that's still asked to have director approval, I believe, if we vary from anything like that. I don't, we have nothing other than, that we know of, but if there's a material that comes up, I mean, we'd like to be able to use it, but I think we've covered that we can't do wood, we can't do cement block, those kind of things, unpainted surface or metal. So, again, it's going to be a hard surface, some kind of a cementious material, whether it's brick, rock, stone, stucco, hardy board, so.
And then the other concern I have is, how many units? Can you limit the units?
I think we did.
Well, you did, but can you, my, my concern here is, we are less than a mile from 122nd and Penn. We all know what's going on at 122nd and Penn, and this just looks like.
On 122nd.
An awful lot of density.
Well, and I, and I too know, you know, I've been here many times, that we've heard the discussion about 122nd Penn, but, you know, I've done, probably of all the consultants here, my fair share, I've, I've done my part of apartments, and I've also done like Martin Park Apartments, and Park Memorial Apartments, and a lot of apartments that are very nice projects. They were built with quality, some of those are 20 years old, and they have had not a problem at all. So, we need, I think we need a good project in this part of town. I think this will be. So, and it's low dense, I mean, this is a low density for an apartment complex. It's not like your 300-unit, 10-acre, you know, property, or five or 350 units, which is very typical. So, I don't know, I just think we need to provide for this part of town a, a good solution to have.
I know.
I think this is.
And you need an electronic sign.
No, we took that out.
No, you took that out.
We agreed that we won't do that. That's in one of the, that's one of the TEs.
Now, this master development plan, the site plan I'm looking at, Brian, you're going to follow that?
At this point, yes, sir.
At this point?
Yes, and if something changes, then we know we'd have to be back with the site plan, so.
What's Walgreens building material going to be?
I have no idea. I don't know that it's a Walgreens. I've heard that it's, could be a pharmacy of some kind, so, but it would have to be, I mean, you've seen most Walgreens, most of them are brick, all over town, so I would imagine it's, it would be their standard construction, what they do everywhere else.
How much of an objection would Walgreens have to put the building on the corner and the parking in the back?
I think that they, they don't like that. They've got one of those like, like that in the village, at Britton Road and Penn, and apparently it just doesn't work that well. They want their, they want people to be seen when they get out of their cars, they think it's a safety issue. Like you said, if another tenant comes along, then we can talk to them about that. Because like you said, we get benefit when we do that, when we put the building up front. And when we met with James, we did that with on, we did that on three of the buildings that we could. So, we've tried to, we've tried to comply with that urban design guideline, so.
Okay, nobody's signed up. I move approval of the application. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and let's.
Thank you. Item 16 is ABC 784, an application by Forefathers Inc. for an ABC 2 at 22418 North Guernsey Avenue, Ward 2.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
If you pull a microphone down and give us your name, please, and address.
My name is Dom Nguyen, president of the Forefathers and co-owner of Guernsey Park. Good afternoon. We have a restaurant, and we'd like to get the ABC 2 license for the alcohol beverage consumption for the food, 1218.
Janice?
Before I'd ever even opened my packet this weekend, I went to this restaurant for lunch on Saturday. It is so cool. I have some issues with respect to, not issues, questions with respect to parking. You know, this is a very tight area. But clearly, this is what this area is supposed to be, so I, I feel a little like it's, you know, pointless to even talk about that. You all ought to go there, it's very cool. And the food was great. So, I would move for approval. If there's anybody here.
No one has signed up. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve item 16. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17 is ABC 785, application by Tower Lakes, L O C., for an ABC 2 at 1020 East Britton Road, Ward 7.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson, with Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. David O'Hannon. Mr. David O'Hannon here is also representing the owners. Tower Lakes project, as you know, is a P U D mixed use, allowed for some commercial in this tract. And the, because of all the success in the office being developed south of here, there's been, and northwest of here, there's been a lot of interest from restaurateurs wanting to locate on here. So we've moved forward with this application, requesting the overlay. I did talk to Commissioner Williams and suggested that we add a TE to this application, that we limit the square footage of the ABC overlay to the square footage of the building on the permit application. Right now, we don't have a building size. The areas that were included in the application were the actual building pad, as you can see on the site plan, but obviously the restaurant would be smaller than that, smaller than the building pad. So we concurd that the best way to approach this would be when we come in for our site plan approval, we'll have a specific square footage and we'll, we'll agree in the TE to limit it to that size.
Okay, so we'll have a TE number two to that effect then?
Yeah.
I think it's, I don't know if there is a TE.
Oh, no, in favor, I'm sorry. I'm looking at unfavorables. I was going to stick it there.
It's a stray application, so you don't have any TEs. You're, it can't be conditional, so.
We would agree to limit it to the square footage of the building on the, on the permit application.
Okay, no one's signed up. Move approval of the application as modified. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes and that's approved. Item 18, looks like a companion, ABC 786 at 9300 North Kelly Avenue, Ward 7.
Again, Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. This is the site next door, same agreement. We would limit it to the size of the application on the permit.
Again, no one's signed up. Move approval of the application as condition. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes and that's approved. Items 19 and 20 have been continued. Item 21 is PC 10342, an application by Deer Creek Park LLC to rezone 4250 South Sarah Road from AA Agricultural to I-1 Single Family in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon, representing the applicant. And this is a, a site that's located about 800 feet north of Southwest 44th Street, obviously on the east side of Sarah Road. And if you'll notice, it is identified by your comprehensive plan to be in the urban growth area. We are asking that it's currently zoned AA. We'd ask that it be rezoned to R-1 to allow for the companion item, which is preliminary plats, strictly single family. Your staff report is in support, recommends approval, it's consistent with the plan and we'd ask for your approval.
Yeah, Kendall, it seems that we have some issues with the traffic study and some of the surrounding developments that weren't, maybe weren't included in that. I'd like to see us continue this until we can address that and maybe kind of talk about how we proceed with it if you will agree to that.
Okay, we were hoping to move on with at least a rezoning, but we'll go ahead and agree to the continuance and come back July 18.
In that case, a motion, how long do you want to continue it? Boy, it's got to be a month.
Next meeting, July 18th, I believe.
Okay, we have a motion to continue item 21 to July 18. Cast your votes and the pending piece.
Same, July 18th.
Second, okay. Motion to continue item 22. Cast your votes and that's approved. Thank you. Item 23 has been continued. Item 24 is S P U D 706, application by Shaz Investments to rezone 8415 Southwest 59th Street from P U D 1365 to S P U D 706 in Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box, Tim Johnson and I represent the applicant. And this is an application where there was a previous developer that had come before this commission. The property had been rezoned, the developer ended up losing the property. Our client is doing both the residential development, which is to the east of this property, and would like to do the commercial development, which is on the corner of 59th and I-52. The exhibit that Mr. Johnson has handed out to you is a very good depiction of what you see along Highway 152, which takes on a industrial feel for part of it. A portion of it is office and you have some residential. The sign, which is the bank site, is an example of a LED sign that has been very effective for the bank. I think it's an eight foot sign, but you can tell with the berm, it's probably 12 to 13 feet. What we would like to do is take that corner property and you'll note in the staff report, they couldn't find any favorable considerations, but we've, we've found a few we'd like to discuss with you.
We'd love to hear them.
Yes. You know, this is a site that you, you can't say that if you allowed a billboard, we would cause any kind of sign clutter, because you don't see many other billboards. So that's one favorable I could think of. Two, our client is very agreeable to working on modifying our request. We recognize that 45 feet in height and 640 feet as a normal billboard might be a little excessive, but we're more than willing to modify that if this commission wanted us to. In addition, the staff report reflects that there might be some uses that need to be modified. And our thought is that we do not need a large gasoline station. We can go with 46 instead of 45. So if this commission is so inclined, we, we would like the opportunity to be able to advertise the residential development that you see being developed. Keep in mind, it's the same owner. And we believe that this is an appropriate location. It'll be an LED and so we would love to have your input on what height and size you think could be appropriate.
May I make a comment?
Artfully said.
Could I just say something? I'm totally, I'm not in favor of this application. It's, but, but and as, and deference to you, Dennis, sometimes lawyers have really tough cases to argue. And this is one of the tough cases, that you really got to pull everything out of a hat to even make this close to being feasible. I'm not willing to negotiate size, height, et cetera. All I know is, is that on this location where this is, an eight foot monument sign is what we should be seeing and less intensive uses for the corner. I'm not willing to go through and go have the time to take, okay, eight feet, nine feet, 12 feet, et cetera. I suggest that you maybe redo this application and come back next meeting with something to let us look at. Because I'll, I'll look to, my, my recommendation is to deny the application. Rather than do that, perhaps you want to continue this and redo it and come back another day.
Well, the only I'd say is, one, we would agree to change our use in regard to the gasoline station from 45 to number 46, which takes it from large to small. And the other uses we think are appropriate. You're going to possibly see a Brahms or a heating establishment. With regard to the sign, I think eight foot is not on the scale that the client could live with, but if something like 30 was, then we, and if it's not, then it's probably better to, to move it on. But I just wanted you all to know, we were flexible.
Flashing, flashing EMD signs aren't going to be appropriate for this particular place. Just, and so I'm just suggesting, come back next time and tell us what you want to do.
Well, the city council's actually adopted a policy not to increase the number of billboards in the city.
Right.
And if we were to deny the billboard, that would be in accord with their policy. Well, then, maybe that's the better direction for you all to go, because we do want a billboard.
While, while we have this in front of us, I'm sorry. I'm curious about the bank site with EMD sign pictures that are here. And I'm wondering if, this is the way you get around the sign ordinance now? You, you build a giant berm and put your sign up on top of that? And if so, what it is we need to do to bring that to a halt? That's completely inappropriate and to me, that's just ludicrous.
I had nothing to do with that, but I thought it was pretty creative. It's quite creative. We should probably have an inspector go take a look. I gave him an A for effort on that one.
I mean, maybe we need to start tying these to street grade or something. That's just, I can't, can't deal with that, so.
So if Dennis wants to move forward, then I'll recommend denial.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item 24. Cast your votes.
No, I'm going to keep this. And that should go forward to the council with a reminder that it's their policy.
Oh, I'll remind them. Thank you.
Item 25 is C 6461, revised final plat of Kings Park Villas in Ward 5.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant and also have the applicant, Mr. Brandon Waller, with me today, if you have any questions to him. But this is actually a revised final plat and you all approved not too long ago, a few months ago, actually, a final plat, that the drawing and the lots and the street line and everything is identical to this one. The reason that we're back before you is with the last plat, we did agree to provide an emergency access out to Penn. We thought we had an agreement in place to acquire that easement. That has since fallen through and so we're unable to get the emergency access. So we're back asking as per TE number three for a variance to that. We have agreed to sprinkle the homes and we visited with Mike Wilson and Fire Marshal's office. He's all out with the application, so that's what we're here for, is to ask for that variance and we'd ask for your approval.
I remember when this case came before, Kendall, and I, that's a, you know, we thought, same as you, is that there would be an agreement between you and the, your client and the property owner. That obviously, speaking with the developer, has fallen through. I'm, I'm ready to push this thing through. They're going to sprinkle the houses.
Correct.
That's, that's the best thing we could ask for at this point, rather than hold them up any longer, in my opinion. With that, I'd move approval.
Hey, we have a variance and any further discussion, anybody?
Well, is the, is the approval of the variance subject to sprinkling? Is that how we phrase that? Or do we add another TE that said, you'll sprinkle? We approve the variance with an additional TE.
That's fine. Okay, so that's the modification of the variance. Do we have a second? Okay. The motion then is to approve the variance as condition with the addition of sprinkling all of the homes.
Correct.
Cast your votes and that's approved. Move the application. We have a motion and a second to approve item 25. Cast your votes and that's.
Thank you.
Item 26 has been continued. Item 27 is P U D 1478, application by Garden Tannenbaum Holdings to rezone 9017 North University Avenue from I-1 Single Family to P U D 1478 in Ward 2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Dick Tannenbaum and Larry Cody. This is an application that started many, many months ago and our initial application with the P U D called for a mix on this 20 acres of approximately 20, 10 acres of multifamily, a nine acres of single family attached, and then a one acre park. The nine, the 10 acres of multifamily was proposed to be your typical three story, brick multifamily. And the single family was going to be a brownstone type condo, townhouse, townhouse type of approach. And then initially, we wanted to do a one acre park that would be open for the neighborhood. To address the, the park first, that became an issue. It's an issue for liability for my client. We didn't believe that the city had any interest in taking the park from us, so we, we learned real quickly that the, the park wasn't going to work and it wasn't real feasible. We did meet with the neighbors when we first filed this application at the YMCA. We had a host of issues that they had, one of which was the, the three story buildings, one of which was the, the school building itself going away. And one of the issues was traffic. As this application was filed, as you all know, we had to do a traffic study and that was done by Tim Johnson, who's here to answer any questions as well. And what we found with the traffic study was, our initial proposal that you see here was a reduction in traffic from when the high school was in place. And with our, our new site that I'll show you in a second, the, it further reduces the traffic impact by 30 additional percent. So after the, the neighborhood meeting, we went back and addressed the concerns. What we decided to do was come back with a, a new concept. The new concept reduces the density overall. This is something called the, the big house concept and it's a, a product that I don't believe we have here in Oklahoma City yet. But it, it's a multifamily product, but it doesn't look like a traditional multifamily unit. It looks more like a, a very large home. One of the unique features about this product is every apartment has a garage. Some are one car garages, some are two. So the added benefit that the garage gets you is it reduces your, your surface parking and the, the amount of parking that you see that normally would be in a multifamily project. So in the reduction of density, our initial proposal had 364 units. Our new proposal is 270. There was a, a TE asking it to be limited to that and we are in agreement with that. So our density now on the, the overall 20 acres is 13.41 dwelling units per acre compared to our initial with the single family was 19.15. So we, we hope that with this, this new product, a new concept and our reduction of density, that it would appease neighbors, but we wanted to make sure that we went back and visited with them. So we did so and there, there were still some concerns. One of the additional benefits that this product has is they're all two story. There are no three story units. So they're all limited to two story and that obviously helps with the density, but some of the same issues still arose at the neighborhood meeting. On the traffic issue, we explained that this, this product is now a 30% reduction from what we originally filed and even that was less than what the high school created based on the study. The, the park had to go away and we explained why, but the biggest issue we faced was the, some peoples in the neighborhood's desire for the building to stay. And the building that's currently there has a lot of problems. It has been ravaged by crime over the last several years. It's been broken into multiple times, fires set inside, all the, the wires have been stripped. There's no electricity to the building. Even if there was, there's exposed wires everywhere. There's rat infestation, there's mold problems. So the, the building is now to a point where it's no longer functional as a school or really for any other use. So when we look at the area and we look at what options we have for these 20 acres, my client believes that this, this product, being a new product to Oklahoma City in this, in this area, will be very successful and it will be a, a good repurpose of this, this 20 acres that otherwise remains as, as a vacant trap for, for crime and, and all sorts of, of other problems. So we do have several TEs, if I could address a couple of them. On number one, it asks that the, the uses be limited to the, the R4 and we do have to have the telecommunication tower use. There is a cell phone tower currently on the site attached to the smoke stack of the school and there's a, a lease and I asked my client today, it's around a 25 year lease. So the cell phone company has a lease on the property. They, they have the right to put the tower and we have to work with them. So we do need to add that use, but it's obviously a benefit to my client to make sure that it, it looks as, as nice as it can and, and fits into the, the overall site. So they're going to do everything they can to, to make it as, as least intrusive as possible. We're fine with number two, number three and four. Number five, I want to make sure on, on the parking, we, we agree to that, but we want to make sure that our, our parking inside the garages can count to, to satisfy any, any parking requirement. We think that having the interior parking is certainly a benefit, rather than having a big sea of parking that you see in a lot of apartment complexes. Six, we are fine with. Seven, deal with sidewalks. We will have interior sidewalks throughout as well as sidewalks on the outside on the, the streets bordering it. And there will be a connection, but I, I want to make sure the commission's clear that, that there will be a gate. It'll be gated community, so anybody that lives within the development can walk through the gate and access the sidewalk on the perimeter, but there, it will be controlled access. Eight, we're fine with. Nine, we're fine with. Ten, we would like to delete because we can't, we have no control on designing the, the tower. The cell phone company has, has a lease and, and that's up to them. Eleven, we're fine with and 12, we're fine with. So with that, we would ask for your approval and here to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Box? We do have someone signed up.
Devin?
Yes.
Have you actually gone through the process, talking to the city about the park issue? And if so, would you kind of walk me through that?
But we had some initial discussions, and I don't remember who we spoke to, but one of the, the problems is, I know the city has a vast amount of park space, and they don't want to add any additional. So, you know, the, what we got was, you know, they weren't interested. So when we looked at it from my client's perspective, it, it poses a lot of liability issues to have a park that would just be open to everybody. So what we thought might be a, a unique thing for the neighborhood, quickly we realized that that, that wouldn't be, be feasible. So instead, we decided we, you know, reduced the density, limited our heights, and tried to do everything else we could to make it more pleasant and fit in better with the neighborhood.
If you know the comments, we'll hear from Carol Tims. If you can adjust the microphone to, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Carol Tims, 1425 Northwest 91st Street.
Thank you.
And our concern is the density. It's already a community there. They're trying to put a community within a community. It's a fragile community as it is. I understa, we just don't want apartments of any kind in that area because it upsets the balance in trying to keep it a community. But we're trying to build and, you know, come together, but I see this tearing us apart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else come to talk to us about this from today that didn't sign up? Okay. Commissioners, discussion, comments, action?
Um, the first, with the first meeting on this project, which was quite some time ago now, I had kind of gone out of the house without my notes and hadn't written down where we were meeting, which was not on the site, but that's where I went. And it was, you know, getting dark, and there were people there for, I don't know, practices of some kind out on the, on the oval, the track oval. But to drive around the school, I mean, it is a scary place. And there are, you know, there's plenty of evidence, just from casual observation, that it has been broken into, that there have been fires, there are asbestos notices on the doors, there's, you know, I, I can sympathize with people who may feel some attachment to the place because they went to school there, but clearly, this building is not viable, and the school board has obviously, you know, made that decision in an irrevocable way when they chose to, you know, replace the school with a new building elsewhere. So I don't think it needs to continue to be there. I don't think it, it can be put to any useful purpose. I had some concerns about the original proposal, and I think that the, the things that they have done to really change their whole concept, it wasn't just that they adjusted, you know, made some little tweaks here and there. They've, they've really revised their whole concept for this development. And unless other commissioners have comments they wish to make, I think I'll move approval.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment about, and, and sympathy with the numbers of people that signed that protesting that was in our packet. I mean, I, I appreciate the effort of the petitioners that went out there to get this, you know, get the signatures, et cetera. But with this presentation and what I've seen about how this quote scary property is right now, you know, is gonna be developed, and developed in a really pretty significant way that I think will, I think it, I think it will not affect the property owners around with this kind of development. With, I mean, if you had three or four stories of just slabbed, you know, bad buildings, that'd be a concern. This isn't, and so I think you ought to second it, James.
And the second is the conditions that was written by Mr. Box?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With the, with the.
Leading TE 10.
Leading TE 10, okay.
Okay. All right. We have a motion for approval deleting TE 10. What, is, is there an addition on TE 1?
Yes, to add the cell phone tower use, yes.
Eliminate it one place and add it someplace else. I mean, eliminate 10 and add the language to 1. And, and I, I would say just, I do very much appreciate the effort that's been put in by the people who live in this area. I wouldn't be in support of this if I did not believe that it would be a benefit to this community and to this area. And it's, it's not just that it's not gonna be detrimental. I think that it will be a real benefit to this area.
Ready to vote? We have a motion and second to approve this item, deleting TE 10, amending TE 1. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 28 is being withdrawn. Item 29 is SPD 718, application by Raunak Eman for ONGO Express to rezone 2410 Northeast 23rd Street from R4 General Residential to SPD 718 in Ward 7.
I'm Julie Landy's attorney for the applicant, and it's currently zoned R4. You can see it's an odd-shaped parcel there. We're requesting to rezone it to a spud to put a large gas station in, not a large gas station, but by city definition, a large gas station. And we've read the staff report, and we don't have any problems with the two TEs that are here.
Do you have a rendering of what your prototype building is?
No. The applicant chose not to do that.
Steve Landy's with Land Run Group. We did not actually generate a rendering at this time. It's gonna be very similar to, matter of fact, y'all approved another one through ONGO Express on 23rd Street recently. That was part of the consent docket on 15th, excuse me, the other area we work a lot. But it'll be very similar. Basically, it's the same organization.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I would like to continue this item because, for a number of reasons. When I haven't visited with them, and I see some traffic congestion problems right there at that bridge on 23rd, and I'd like to visit with them, so I'd like to continue this for, to the next meeting, to get myself and Councilman Pettis time to visit with them on.
Would you agree to a one-month continuous to meet with the councilman and Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Well, we have a motion and a second then to continue item 29 to our July meeting. Cast your votes. And that's continued.
Item 30 is being continued. Item 31 is SPD 720, application by Sam Gresham to rezone 2307 North Blackwelder from R1 Single Family to SPD 720 in Ward 6.
And where did Mr. Gresham go?
Here he is.
Sam, you're up. Barney's. Go right ahead.
You can't figure that out, Sam. You can't get approval.
Can I have some exhibits here I'd like to pass out?
He's an architect, not an engineer.
Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd. This is my application for property at 22nd and Blackwelder. It's proposed to be seven units on composing six buildings. The density is, or the building block coverage is equal to what historically had been there. We're knocking down a building that's currently on the site and adding four new structures, all detached, single-family. The, the renderings will show you the appearance, the proposed appearance. This property is intended to be used, well, most of our tenants have come from OCU students, and nice, single-family houses. These small ones, they tend to pay, well, better rent for. This is intended to be one single property, I mean, not proposed for sale individually, so. In a site plan. And the development is, is, it is, as I say, more dense than, than, than what R1 zoning allows, but the surrounding property, actually, to the east of me is a, is a four-unit apartment complex, despite it being an R1 zoning. South of me is an R, also R1. And those are duplexes across the street from this property. The corner, it, it's a real mix. It surprises me that R1 was not changed or grandfathered from, from a higher density. But at this point, it's, it still maintains that single-family detached character that would be similar to the rest of the neighborhood.
Commissioners, no one has signed up.
This is, I assume, that would fit into this concept that we've been talking about cottage courts or whatever, the small residential kind of infill, although this is maybe not technically infill, but I think this is a great idea. I hope you set a trend.
Thank you. Are you in agreement with the TEs?
You know, I didn't bring my, what are the TEs?
I'm totally prepared here. That'd be a good time to agree to them, Sam.
I agree to them, John. I, I. Yes, I'll agree.
I have a question about the materials. The rendering here looks like it's, what?
Bordenbad Sani.
Bordenbad, and that's it. That's nice. I think it's a great little project, you know, so good.
And move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 31. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 32 is PUD 1497. Brian's back. Application by Zimmerman Properties to rezone 641 Northwest 164th Street from PUD 235A to PUD 1497 Ward 7.
For the record, Brian, if you have any questions, I'll represent the applicant. Right to the TEs. We'll go there first. And there's five TEs. We agree with all of them, but I do want to discuss number four. We had this discussion on the project back to the west a little bit about crossing with the sidewalks on 164th. There's two floodplains that end on both sides of this project. The city just widened the street and didn't choose to make the bridges widen for sidewalks. Now, I'm okay on the eastern one, and I think you're gonna hear from Representative of the Neighborhood, too, that they would like me to extend that sidewalk over to the boundary of their subdivision. And I can do that over there because the bridge was built long enough, or the box was built long enough that there's dirt above it, so I can do that sidewalk. But going the other way, I'd have to go through FEMA. I'd have to build a bridge. And apparently, the city didn't choose to do that, so I would, but I'd be glad to do along my frontage as far as I can, on the e, on the west side, but on the east, I will go over all the way over to the edge of that subdivision. So, but the other TEs, I'm fine with. You may have a letter from one of the owners to the east. They talked about the, the parking lots. So we reversed our site plan, and we did it, put all the, most of the parking on the west side, which is where those offices are. And we've also got an addition to make the PUD, and I want to do it on record, and I did this earlier on another item, but we'll do it on this item, since this one it counts on, is that we'll put up a site-proof fence on those parking areas and with trees along the boundary. Because I did say that we're not gonna tear down any of those trees, and we don't want to do site-proof fence. That would be silly, but there, there are moments where there will not be leaves. So we'll put, we'll put fence and trees for our sidewalks. And other than that, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions before we have someone come up? Okay, Randy, you're up. Give us your name and address for the record, if you would, Randy.
Sure. Randy Lewis. Live at 16613 Sunny Hollow in the Lexington Edition, which is the neighborhood that is to the east of this development. You may have recalled several years ago, back in 2011, this project was here, Sooner Traditions. It was a lot more density. This one, as I understand it, is 100 units. Originally, when we talked to the developer back in 2011, when they bought the property, it was originally gonna be 60 units, single-story. So when we got the zoning request a couple of weeks ago, we were a little shocked that the change had happened. So there's been a lot of changes in the last several weeks since we've gotten the zoning. So I know the applicant doesn't want to postpone this, but I'm a little hesitant to go ahead and endorse it because there are a lot of changes. Now, I will say that they've been a pleasure to work with. They have moved the parking to the other side, but there's still a lot of loose ends out there that concerns me about going forward. When I talked to the people that are developing Zimmerman Properties, they told me that I'm gonna break ground until sometime in 2014. So I'm a little concerned why we have to go forward today. So I just throw that out there as a discussion point. I'm not opposing the density. The 100 units is a lot better than the 235. The 60 was actually better, but I'll, I'll agree to that. It is three stories now, as opposed to two stories, which the current PUD is. Because of the way they're placing things and moving the park to, to the other side and trying to preserve the mature trees, I think they're showing that they're trying to work with us. So I just want to put that out there. The other concern I think many of us neighbors have with any development on this parcel is flooding because you might recall in 2011, when we had a bad rainstorm, that there were two homes that back up to this property that flooded inside, and then downstream in the Valley Edition, there was at least 15 to 20 that had water all the way up. So very concerned about how the hydraulics flow in this area with any development. So just want to make sure staff is aware that we need to be aware of that because it has happened already in the last couple of years. And then you might remember just last week when we had the flooding downtown. So that is a concern of ours, even though they assure us that the design will, will not cause any other issues on that. As was discussed, a lot of investment has been put in sidewalks out in this area. This was the very first area to be widened in the area, before you all adopted the sidewalk model that you do now. We butt up to Edmund. We're the last addition. Edmund has a sidewalk on the other side of our entrance of Sunny Hollow there. It's on the far right-hand side of that. And if the developer is willing to put sidewalks along 164th, we would ask if the city would, would agree to go ahead and install them and tie into our sidewalks that are inside our neighborhood. What they would be doing is just along the front of our addition there, along Sunny Hollow and 164th Street. I think that would be a good addition for our residents, as well as the developments' residents. Because as I understand it, this project is for seniors, 55 and older. So, so that's one of the things that we, we would like to propose. I know a lot of times you all ask developers to put sidewalks in. This is one time I would ask that you support us. Now, I understand the difficulty of going back to the west, but there again, I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I know it's gonna be a little more costly because there just isn't the, you know, without a bridge situation, that one is gonna be a lot more costly, so. But if you do it one way and they can't go the other way, and they have to go out on a busy street like this, it may be worth the investment, too. Because if we go further on down to the west, you've got sidewalks on 164th, on both sides of 164th. Every day, there's people walking. Every day, there's people jogging. But they don't go very far this way because the sidewalks don't allow them to. So just wanted to harp on that. I know in the application, it also talks about detention ponds. And staff's recommendation was that they didn't have to do it right now, but if it flooded later, they would come back and do it. To me, it seems more prudent to go ahead and put the detention ponds in now, to avoid flooding down the road. I don't know exactly if that affects any of the mature trees that we're talking about, but if it doesn't affect any of that area, I would, I would say, why don't we do it today if it helps with the downstream flow? So I just throw that in as a conversation piece. The other thing is, in their application, it doesn't really have enough meat in it that says it's gonna be built for residents that are 55 and above. And I'd like for that to be specified. The original application, back in 2011, when we had a conversation, was gonna be for 62 and older and was gonna be for low income. I understand the difference in the 55 because it's a different clientele. There's a lot more amenities in this project, but I would like that to really be specified, that the residents would be 55 and older. So those are my comments. Would answer any questions you might have of me, so.
Any questions of land, commissioners?
Thank you. Actually, I did think the drainage comment was an odd one. Well, if it floods, we'll do detention. We have one more person to speak. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Max Estes, or Mark Estes?
You two would give us your name and address, and if you have some issues different from Mr. Lewis's, we'd like to hear those.
My name is Mark Estes. I'm at 16504 Sunny Hollow, which is, I'm just the second house in the Sunny Hollow Lexington addition. We've watched a lot of this go over the last couple of years. Of course, everybody wishes they could dream what their neighbor is going to be and what's it going to look like and all that kind of thing. And, you know, we went through all those issues a year or two ago. In fact, the neighborhood is pretty well kind of spent the bank. We went through all those arguments a couple of years ago, trying to make sure what went in there was something nice. But my biggest concern, why I wasn't there then, but I'm there now, is to really reiterate just the one point. I didn't know what's going to be made. We didn't compare notes or anything. Obviously, he didn't even know what was going to be. But my biggest concern area are the two things that he brought up, and flooding is the biggest one. You know, and I've been worried about people going in there and how large a project you're going to be, and a lot of concessions, I know, happened before and apparently have now. A lot of us in the addition haven't seen the new proposal. But the flooding issue is one of the biggest keys, and I didn't know. What I brought is... You know, there was a big issue there a few years ago when the whole area did flood. This was the day after the rain. And as you know, we only, we had four-plus inches less than downtown Oklahoma City did, and yet at that point, both of those creeks that fed into that actually washed up. They fed up over onto 164th. You can see in the first picture, the trash line, as it washed up against that bridge. These are both looking west, down 164th. You can see the trash line of debris left, and the next picture shows you all the debris that rushed up and packed up against that bridge at 164th. It ran on to 164th, and the creek actually banked out, or right at bankout, in around this development. My neighbors across the street who are up to that creek were on creek watch pretty much all night that night. My concern simply is any development that goes in here that has people, especially seniors. You know, I think we should be very cautious of what we allow to go in there. I know they can't build it up. It is what it is. And the floodplain's been argued over and over for this area, but even after the Corps came in and redid all of those banks, we've seen now, the first time we had a major rain after that, it banked up again. So that was my only concern, was that. And a kidding comment about the sidewalk. My wife, a year ago, was getting ready. We're far from kids. She's never been athletic, but she wanted to walk the marathon. So a year ago, she trained for four months to do the memorial. And two weeks before, she was trying to find a trek where she could get longer and longer paths to get ready for it. She was up to that five, seven-mile range, and she was getting really bored with always going over into Edmund because she couldn't really go west. So she finally decided to go west. Just across from there, two weeks, less than a block from the house, she tripped and fell and broke her left wrist. Had to wear a cast in the memorial, so she did the half. So I'm just saying, I'd really love to see that sidewalk go there as well. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Brian?
A couple of things. I understand Randy's comments. You know, we're going to be going to council probably six weeks, five or six weeks. There's a project we did out on MacArthur, you may remember, back at Glenhurst Senior Living Center. That was zoned probably over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. It's getting ready to happen for design, but these things have to, certain things have to happen. So, yeah, they may not break ground until 2014, but certain things have to happen, financing. So we'd like to move forward. I know Randy personally, and I think he'll understand. If he wants to talk, we'll be glad to meet and talk about different things. The only thing that has really changed, we always had 100 units in this application. So that has not changed. The only thing that changed, we flipped the site. Now, I do want to address detention because I haven't seen that comment come back before either. In this area, detention's not required, but if you look at your site plan, well, not the new one, but the old one, we had two detention ponds. I always recommend detention on all our projects, regardless of whether they're required or not. But I do want to say this on the record. And if you look at the drawing, what happened, and what happens, and we've proven this on a couple of other subdivisions, I know this may not make sense to you, but I want to explain it, is this is Chisholm Creek drains basin, huge basin. So it may rain today, as they probably saw. It may rain today, but that water may not get there for a couple hours. Okay? So if I do detention, I may slow that water down on my site, and I may release it at the same time the big water gets there. Okay? Saratoga Farms, if any of you know about Saratoga Farms in Edmund, same thing happened there. Such a big basin with Hunter Creek, Hunter's Creek, is that if I did do detention, I was going to make the situation worse for the neighbors. So in some cases, it's better to let your water go before the big water gets there because Chisholm Basin, Chisholm Creek Basin starts at West Room May. It's a long way from this. So it can be hours before it gets here. So we'll do the study to make sure. I don't want to recommend to my client that we do detention, and then I end up making it worse. Okay? But we will study that. I've been on this project for many years, and we've, this is our third potential project. So we know the situation. We're doing a drainage study for Oklahoma City right now on Chisholm Basin. So we really understand what the water's doing. I just don't want to make it worse. So I don't want to commit, but we will do detention, we will look at it. Other than that, again, I agree with the TEs. We agree to do that, the sidewalk to the east over the flood zone because I can without a major cost. Going to the west, actually, the bridge is not even on our property, but I'll put it wherever I can without getting into a flood zone. So with that, ask for approval.
Yeah, there's one thing I wanted to clear it up. One place that talks about 55, the age restriction, is it 55 or 62?
55. In section 6. something, it says 55, and it is 55 and above.
Yeah, and then in the Development Services Department review on number three, it made a statement that it wasn't clear on the plat what it was. If you look on page, page 10 down at the bottom.
Okay, it is 55 and above.
Okay, so we need to put that on the plat.
Yeah, and we'd be glad to do that.
I'm kind of starting to hurt now that I'm above 55 and I'm hearing that comment, but...
Go ahead and make that a TE and make it clear.
Yes.
That's TE number six, then.
Brian, why isn't there a specific plan wanting to be filed, you know, after we approve this?
I believe that we've given you renderings of the buildings, and we've given you a site plan showing where all the buildings are.
I think that's enough.
Mr. Chairman, can I just register my dismay that the city would be putting in bridges without leaving enough room for the sidewalks, and that maybe we could suggest to them that they look at future bond issues with that in mind and...
If I'm not mistaken, they now do that. This bridge was built before that policy was put into place or that requirement where we included sidewalks with widenings. So, I mean, it is now the city's practice to do that.
So then maybe we should look at our next bond issue with some remedial locations in mind so that we can go back...
Do that particularly when we review the capital improvement projects budget as we do periodically, possibly annually.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah. Good suggestion.
You know, a sidewalk fee and lieu program that they started a couple of years ago, that's kind of what that's for, too, is it can be used in that part of town for that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the applications with the conditions that we stated earlier, and that I would ask Brian to get with Randy and Mark and the other residents so they're really clear between now and council. You can do that.
So adding TE 6, right, 55?
Motion and second, including adding TE 6 to show that the age limit is 55 and up.
Thank you.
All right, motion and second, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 33 is PC 10346, application by Landmark Storage LLC to rezone 2101 North Sarah Road from R1 single-family to R2 median-density residential in Ward 1.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. This is a zoning application to rezone, of course, an existing PUD zoning with an underlying R4 base to R2 to match the existing R2 up in the corner, to make it consistent on the accompanying preliminary plat application.
Some portion of the site is, like 11 acres, is currently R1, is that correct? Am I reading the staff report correctly, subject site?
It's all under, I thought it was all under the PUD, is what I understood.
Well, it looks like I'm reading 11 acres of R1 and PUD 153.
I think it may be the little cutout piece up there where the open area is from the original preliminary plat over adjacent to Kilpatrick. I think that may be.
Just a little tiny piece in the corner, or that strip along the turnpike is R1.
But the base, but the whole of the unit...
The major base of this application is R4.
So it's a step down.
Yeah, but I was just trying to figure out where the R1 piece was.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, I'll move approval of the zoning application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 33. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 34, C 6444, preliminary plat of the signed property, Turnberry Village.
Again, Chris Anderson with SMC, representing the developer. Have read the staff report and agree with the TEs, except for number seven. We would like to ask for a variance on that. The developer is very adamant about requesting that, and the story behind that is this project was originally one overall preliminary plat. I think the original developer did a section down to the south that is existing. Since that time, he has sold off this portion to the developer that I'm working with. This is a completely new project, Turnberry Village for duplexes. It has nothing to do with the existing Sabram Estates project. The actual boundary doesn't even really, on the south, doesn't really match up with the existing layout of that existing preliminary plat. So all that's going to have to be redesigned. I don't know who's doing that. I don't know when that's going to happen. So the developer would just really rather not have that connection to the south.
Yeah, I think we discussed this a little bit beforehand, Chris. It's a lot of density up there to not have any connection back to the south with respect of the rest of the, I mean, I understand your developer's concerns. He didn't know what's going to happen in the first, et cetera, but, I mean, from a land use standpoint, you're pretty isolated back to the west, excuse me, the north and to the west. And to not connect it with that bit to the south just seems to really just isolate that tract out there completely. That's generally a policy that we're pretty adamant about. I understand your client's adamant that he doesn't want...
And I would point out that the original layout that we put in, and I think it said in the staff report that this has been delayed while we address some things. We did add, the original application just had one entrance off of Sarah Road. It was a divided entry, which it still is, but we've also added the entry on to 23rd to provide better access into this area, to make it quite as isolated.
So you're saying you still don't want to have access, but you added another access on to 23rd therefore?
On to 23rd divide, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Sort of flies in the face of our practice and policy of having connectivity.
Yeah.
Between adjacent areas.
I don't think you're going to get there as a voting matter on your variance. Shakes.
I understand. If that's the way it is, then we will remove that request for the variance.
Okay. All right, so we delete TE 7.
I think TE 7 actually stays.
Excuse me, 7 stays. That would be good. Okay, so any other comments on the rest of the TEs, Chris?
No, we agree with those.
Okay.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? No one signed up. Do you have something?
Move the application in.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second to approve item 34, including all TEs. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 35 has been continued. Item 36 is C 6473, final plat of Savannah Estates, from Ward 8.
Yes, thank you. I'm Carlos Savella, representing Red Plains and the applicant. We've read the report, and we agree with all the TEs.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
Move approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 36. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. You saved me. I don't hear too well. I've got my hearing aids cranked up.
Item 37 is C 6475, final plat of Summers Point, Phase 9, in Ward 3.
Chris Anderson, again, with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. Have read the staff report and agree with the TEs. There is a variance request on number three. This application has 31 lots instead of 30.
Have we talked about open space in here? Chris?
For this particular one, there is not open space. There's existing park back up in the subdivision to the north. There's open space in the future section just to the west of us.
Okay. There is a variance to TE 3, Commissioners, and no one has signed up.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm okay with the variance. I'll make a motion to approve the variance. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
And I'll move approval of the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 37. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 38, C 6477, final plat of Valencia Park, Board 8.
Again, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. We have read the staff report and agree with all of the TEs, and just request approval of the plat.
No comments, no one signed up. Any comments, Commissioners? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approve item 38. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 39 is C 6478, a final plat of Talavera, Section 5, in Ward 5.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant. As you can see, this is a continuation of the ongoing Talavera addition. We reviewed the staff report, and we've talked to the staff about TE number three. We agree with all the other TEs, but in this case, which is a little different than Chris's case that you just talked about, if we were to stub a street out in this addition, it would stub into a very large estate ranch development with five-acre tracts. If you can see a little better on this aerial, I had it set up. The, this has all been platted as large five-acre tracts of land, as well as this. So really, any stub to this side would be stubbing into the backyard of somebody's large five-acre tract. And so we would request that TE number three be changed to a variance to the stub requirement. We did discuss the stub to the west in the preliminary plat stage. It was not discussed in section three, which is this piece. And, but we did discuss and agree to stubbing to the south, which allowed Rio Toscano to tie in. And going back and looking at Rio Toscano, it was not requested that they stub west. So I think this would have been the place to do it, was down here. See by the rooftops, this is fully developed up to here. This is under construction and will continue to develop. So we'd request that one change.
Can we not just delete TE 3, or do we have to, is there a need for a variance?
Well, what about the going north? Just as a question on the, the north part is, north of this is developed, is that all right?
Yes, abutting our west property line, all of that is developed into five-acre tracts.
Okay.
We do have in our master plan, we will have a street stub north through the commercial development.
Right.
Under 164th Street in the future.
How about west in that section where your north stub is?
Here?
Yeah.
Those are five-acre tracts right there.
So all of this is now all developed?
Very, well, it has been since before we started.
Yeah.
Very nice homes.
Okay, we need a variance to TE 3, then.
Yeah, I'll move a variance to TE 3.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to variance to the street stub and TE 3. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
And I'll move the application. We have a motion and a second to approve item 39. Cast your votes, and that's...
Item 40 is C 6479, a final plat of Bellamaria Edition, in Ward 4.
Did we miss something?
Paul Peacock with WPM Design Group, representing the applicant. This is the final plat of Bella Maria, it is identical to the PUD zoning and also the preliminaries, and we do agree with the TEs, so, any questions?
We do have someone signed up. Leanne Jones? If you would give us your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Leanne Jones at 14700 Prairie Lane, Oklahoma City, and I have a problem, the back of my acreage where my fence is, it's pipe fence, it's been cemented in, and over the years, there's been, they wiped the fence out, set in cement. Now, I get...
What wiped it out?
Erosion.
Oh, okay.
Pond, the pond that is, I don't know how many feet it is, I've walked it many times to chase my cat. Okay, I'm at, on the proposed development that is number thirteen and fourteen, my five acres is the third one up from the bottom. Whoever is going to develop this, in the first place, there shouldn't have been that many houses in there. One house to five acre, five acre tracts, I thought was going to be there. No, they're going to build a whole bunch of houses. What are they going to do? I challenge anybody who's going to be a developer or anything to come out there and walk the fence line with me, and they better bring knee-high boots. What's going to happen when they build these houses in there? What's going to happen to all that water? I get a lot of water from the agriculture land that's on the north of my acreage. I guess it's going to stay agriculture, I don't know. This should have stayed agriculture, it's dense shrubbery, and because of the drought last year, a lot of the shrubbery trees have died. It's a mess.
So, the area east, north, east and north of you is undeveloped at this point, there's nothing on it?
Well, the five-acre plot tract that's north of me, that's pastureland, that's okay, but I guess...
But the erosion you're getting is natural, is it not? It's just topography, the lay of the land?
Yes, it's natural, it's downhill slope.
Well, that's not going to change.
It will, if they put a bunch of houses in there, what are they going to do with all the water that comes from the pond?
Well, if it's on the site...
There's two feet...
If it's on the site that they're developing, they'll have to have detention, or some means of containing the water to the current...
How can I be assured of that?
Current rate of flow, well, city code...
They put in ditches or little runways for the water, where's it going to go? Back towards my fence line?
City engineers and engineers for the developers will have to solve that problem. We can't do that here.
Can they talk to me?
You can talk to them, sure. You can talk to Public Works Department.
I'll be glad to go out there and walk it with them, and like I said, they're going to have to bring knee-high boots.
Excuse me, Ms. Jones, is the erosion coming from the existing pond that's there now?
Yes.
Well, I think they're going to fill that in because they're going to build houses there. Maybe Mr. Peacock can talk about that.
Well, there is a natural slope. My fence line, the back of my acreage, the back half where I have the horses, chickens, dogs, cats, ducks, it naturally slopes, and we've had that, like, for 20 years, and it's just one of those things. But you bring in more houses, and where are they going to put a house? On number thirteen? On that small of a plot?
It's always zoned, it's always zoned for that. Curtis, can you explain what the city policy is? Curtis is one of our engineers in the Public Works Department, and he'll explain what our drainage policy is.
Sure.
Paul, could you address that pond situation?
Well, we're going to actually leave the pond, and the pond actually discharges through our, about where our southeast corner of our property, so it actually leaves our property through a small swell, that's a natural swell, be the south lot, so her lot, where her lot is, I'm not sure what water she's getting, but it's not the water that's leaving the pond.
Well, she's in the northeast, northwest corner of where you're...
Our discharge for the pond, though, goes through a natural swell that actually leaves the property at the southeast corner.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. And that's about a one-and-a-half acre tract there, Lot 13.
So, you're going to leave the pond?
Yes, we want to use it as an amenity to the development, because it's a real pretty pond, it's going to have to be cleaned up, obviously, and, you know, that, but we were not going to fill it in, and also, that, you know, that's an area for us to do some type of natural detention with the water and stuff. There's just been so much rain lately, I mean, you know, it's full right now.
So, are you going to change the grade of the property that abuts the property?
Not planning on it, no. Those are big enough lots that we probably won't do a real grading plan for the site, it will be more that each individual homeowner, their builder will adapt a home to the lot, try to save the trees and that kind of thing. I mean, you know, these types of flats, you typically don't tear out all the trees, you build a home that fits inside that environment, so...
So, Paul, when I look at, when I look at this plan, is Lot 15, is that where the pond is, or am I looking at it wrong?
Yes, no, that's where the, that's where the pond is.
So, what, is that still a house?
There's, there, there, there had to be some work on the east bound, the east shoreline of that pond, but there is almost, there's enough distance between the street and the pond to be able to build a house in front of the pond, on the street side.
Really? So, that's enough space between the edge of the pond to the street, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, I said, there may have to be a few, a little bit of fill into the pond there, and a little bit of work on the east side, but we're going to try to keep that to a minimum.
So, you have a pond side?
Yeah, we want to keep the pond as big as we possibly can, just from the fact it's just a nice pond, and it adds a lot of amenity to the development.
I have to build a bridge on Lot 13 to cross the pond.
Yeah, I'm telling you. Yeah, how will it get, how will it get to Lot 13 with the pond in it?
Again, you know, the east side, there may be, there may have to be a little, those are fingers that go up in there, they're very shallow, so, you know, they're, for a driveway, you might have to build, fill a little bit of those fingers in to get a driveway across there.
I'm sorry, I have to step down, but I wish I could be very sure about...
Well, we can undo the topography and the drain and the natural slope of the land and what she's experienced now.
What you get with this lady and kind of exploring to her, what...
Yes, and we've talked with her quite a bit before, but obviously, we're going to try to do enough to protect ourselves that we haven't impacted her in some way adversely where, you know, she could come back later on us, so we're going to, we'll look at that very closely and make sure, I'm not sure, as I said, we've talked to her quite a bit, and not sure she'll...
She has heard all this.
Yes, I'm not sure she'll be happy, but we'll try.
We're not going to fix, we're not going to fix our problem with this project is the bottom line. Commissioners? Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item forty, cast your votes, and it's approved. Buck should not be voting, record him as...
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, now, we have item fourteen, which we've moved to the heel of the docket. Is the applicant here for item fourteen?
Well, I'm Steve Landys with Land Run Engineering or Land Run Group, and I guess I'm representing Mr. John Pinion. He happens to be ill today, so I'll see what I can do to help him. I was going to say, honestly, I'm at a little bit of a loss here because I'm just here, found out he was ill today. Matter of fact, when I heard that he was moved to the end of the docket, I left him a message, and he said, "Man, I've got a problem, I'm sick, there's nothing I can do about it, is there a way you can do something to represent me?" He said he didn't think there were any problems, if there were, I'll try to address them. I think he'd love to see it go ahead and pass forward, and if not, we'll be happy to do a continuation, continuation, but I think he'd prefer to move forward if possible.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item fourteen, cast your votes, and again, Mr. Irwin is not voting. He's not here.
Thank you, I appreciate that one.
All right. That concludes the public hearing items, is it not, Russell? Okay, planning commission committees? Pardon me? I don't know what you're looking at.
That's the chair, I'm sure.
That's the next item, after committees. Any committee reports? All right, now, where do you write them, Bob? I nominate John Yopel as chairman, and Michael Hensley as vice chairman, as so for the next one-year term, unless there's any objection from either one of them.
Seeing now, second pass.
A motion to approve? Irwin voted for that one. Anything, planning commissioners, any other comments or discussion, anything?
I do, um, we are looking at having, and I'll email all of you, can I do that? A town hall-type meeting on, we're looking at July the 11th now, so that'll be before we meet again, on the Western Avenue streetscape development. It'd probably be at Westminster School and their auditorium, and it'll be like the full court press, get as many people there as we possibly can to really present to them what I hope might be available to you before then, to kind of see what it is that's being proposed, and get some input from people in the area, both the business owners along Western and the people who live nearby, what they think of this idea, before we jump headlong into it.
Open meeting act question, Susan? Can she email eight of us?
Just the date and time?
Can nine of us be there?
It'll be well-publicized, and it'll be open to the public.
Well, she's saying staff can send it out.
Oh, okay.
All right. I'll be not in attendance at that nor the July meeting, I'll be out of town. James, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing that came up today that was really interesting that we hadn't seen, they call it creativity, I think it's a way to hedge the sign issue by raising those big berms. I hadn't seen that before, put a 12-foot berm and an eight-foot sign. So, maybe, as Janice had stated earlier, that maybe we need to take a look at that to kind of prohibit that, that issue there. Either attach it to the curb height or the surface of the road or the natural grade, I don't know.
I think Mr. Chairman said that they also would send an inspector out to have a look at it as well, see whether that really complies with the requirements of the ordinance.
Well, but if we need a modification to policy or subdivision regulations that say we measure these from natural grade or some...
A street level or something like that.
...way of expressing it, would that be what we do? Brad, that's a good point.
I did notice that, so I might have learned.
I will say, that's a very interesting intersection, it's very dangerous. I come home down council every single day, and we have friends that live just on the west side of the highway there, 152, I guess that's what that is, but that's a very dangerous intersection, seen many accidents, including fatality accidents. That sign at night, just, it's, it's not Mathis Brothers, but it's substantially lit up.
Is it bright, too bright?
It is very bright.
It is, and like Todd said, there have been a lot of accidents there, and there's actually a traffic light going in there, I believe, I'm not sure if it's going this year or next year, but it's already been planned.
Does the berm or the sign in combination block the site triangle there, or not?
I don't think so, it's just very prominent, I mean, you notice it, you know, it sticks up there pretty high, because the bank itself sits up pretty high above the street level, yeah, so, yeah.
Well, I'd suggest that we ask the, either Development Services or Planning Department to come back to us next, at our next meeting with a proposal as to what language would be appropriate to control that in the future.
Well, I guess we're going to evaluate existing language to determine if that's...
I think when they issue signs, they measure from the grade of property around, they don't, they don't allow you to build up like that.
Right.
Something that happened to creative after the fact, so we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Problem with these LEDs, even very, even five-by-five or five-by-three in an area where there is no other light, it's phenomenal, there's one up by Grand Lake that they, I swear, there's now, there's one LED sign out in the middle of nowhere, literally, it's the only LED, and you can see it for miles, I mean, seriously, for miles, so, the evaluation process for those in an area where there's no other ambient lighting, they really, really stand out, it's phenomenal how much that is, I can imagine what that bank looks like at night, from that experience, couldn't believe it.
Could we have an inspector look at the nits at that one after dark and see what we've got? Okay. Planning Department, Russell, we skipped our study session today.
We skipped our study session today.
Thank you for shortening our day.
Paula, well, we failed to provide adequate notice on that, so we'll have to move that to the 28th...
Whoops.
...July meeting. If you know Veronica, who's my executive assistant, she went to transit, so just got caught up in it.
Okay, anything else from planning?
Uh, no at this point.
Development Services? Municipal, council? Citizens to be heard, you're the only two citizens remaining. Any, of course, we are too, but that, any other business or motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for staying on behalf of your associate there.